Okay, we're gonna back up one second to talk about Angie. Come on up, come on up, Ms. Gutierrez, come on up.
It took a long time to find a spot.
That's okay. Mrs. Gutierrez has been a wonderful addition to our campus. She provides exceptional support to the ECSE classroom and a special education students across the school. Her kindness, compassion, and teamwork shines through everything she does. Venus Middle School, Brendan Glenn. Coach Glenn truly represents the Venus ISD vision of excellence with his positive attitude and ability to build relationships with all students. You will always hear students speak positively about him and they are excited to see him on our campus. Venus High School, Melissa Pollard. Mrs. Pollard is recognized for her dedication to professional growth and exceptional commitment to our students. She recently achieved a significant milestone by passing the rigorous ESL number 154 certification exam, ensuring she provides the best possible instruction for our multicultural classes. Furthermore, her willingness to stay current through training, including attending the T A B E conference, makes her a prime example of a lifelong learner. She is consistently patient, respectful, and understanding with her students. We celebrate her genuine care for each individual. Is Ms. Nickel present?
She is not, I didn't know we were doing it for sure tonight since the other staff apologized.
Okay.
If y'all don't wanna stay, you don't have to. It's usually a fun time had by all, but you're more than welcome to leave. And congratulations to everybody.
You are dismissed.
Do I?
I said do our dismiss.
Not you, sit back down. Sit back down.
Misunderstood, girl.
Yeah. We'll go to item six, presentation of campus reports. Oh. Do we wanna move the... Well, I mean, if it's some...somebody can pick it up for you. Is it heavy? Okay.
All right, good evening. For the primary school, it's been a busy month of November and we're excited that we're so close to Thanksgiving. Our enrollment at this point, we are at 385, so we are consistently staying at that number. For our ADA attendance, we wish it was a little higher. I think we're the lowest in the district this year. We have been plagued by illnesses. I think every other week it's something new, so we are about to begin some new attendance initiatives and hopefully we can get our kiddos to school. Other than that, we're staying busy. We have a big hoon of field trip coming up. We have Thanksgiving lunch this week. Last week, we hosted our first ever Veterans Day parade and that was a wonderful ceremony and a way to celebrate those families. And then last month, you can see here, we did our first ever Hispanic Heritage Month parade also. So all our bilingual classes, they walked the halls and celebrated their heritage. So we are just excited for all the things coming up. Book fair is going on this week, so we are staying busy. Thank you.
Hi, I feel like that this has happened like days and weeks and months ago, but it hadn't been that long ago. Our enrollment is at 636 and we kinda go back and forth, couple of kids here and there, back and forth. So our fourth grade bilingual teacher has finally become certified and if we get our behavior teacher tonight, we are finally fully staffed. Yes, thank you, Warren. I needed that. He knows how hard it's been over there, so. Working on our PLC process to try to move ourselves along and that's going well. We had a great time at our trunk or treat and there was a few pictures there of our kiddos. That same week, we celebrated our red ribbon week, the week of October 27th, and they had lessons, but I wanted to take just a real quick minute to brag on, this is third grade bilingual. At the time that I got this together, this was...these were the only bilingual grades that I had in, but I just wanted to point out at the growth that we're seeing in these kiddos. So I was very, very proud that they're growing and the teacher was proud and excited and already has a plan to move them on up further. Alrighty. Our parent conferences, I think my teachers enjoyed that more than they expected. You know, at first they're kinda like eh, but I think they really enjoyed it. We had a huge turnout. Almost every slot was filled and sometimes if the slots weren't filled, they would make a phone call and either the parent would talk on the phone or they would come up. So we were excited about that. We're working on our attendance. We are after the middle school. Yes, we are going to get them, but we are getting high attendance with popcorn parties and announcing the grades that have the, you know, the best attendance. And then here's a few more pictures of our trunk and tr...trunk or treat and our orange and black day. Just wanted to share a little bit about the fun that we're having and we are ready for tomorrow. Anybody wants to drop by, have a seat for you to help. So come on by for our parent Thanksgiving meal tomorrow. Thank you.
All right, just to go on record, she's not gonna catch the middle school in attendance. Our attendance last month was 96.4%. Our current enrollment right now is 515. It fluctuates almost day to day, anywhere between 511 and 518. We stay right in those numbers for sure, but she's not gonna catch me. So seventh grade won the attendance challenge last month and it was snow cones all around, so everybody had a good time with snow cones. It's a...we announce attendance at lunches and so when they don't win, they're not very happy. And so the group that's at the...the lowest this week will be the highest next week because they start talking to each other, so it's funny. So things we did this month, we did, just for some teacher morale, we do this every year, we let the teachers trick or treat. Kids get to do that in the evening, so the teachers do it during the day. They trick or treat all of the offices and they get to get candy and treats and it's a fun time by all. We buy 'em the little Halloween buckets and everything, so they have fun. We did that. So we have started with our, we call it genius mindset, that's our intervention time. We did some pre-assessment with kids. They've been doing lessons, different groups are doing different things, but then we are post-assessing last week, so we'll see how that is going with growth with the kiddos. If you're on my campus, you'll hear kids say, "Well, I zerned it." Zern is one of the programs we use and when they complete lessons, then they zerned it and it's a big deal. We do top 10 on the wall and announce every week, so just trying to get kids excited about that. We had our, for my campus, it was our first math framework instructional walks and it went really well. They were very complimentary of what they saw with the teachers. Since last time we visited, I had...we had our schools to watch, like site visit where they came. We had a parent panel. I had 12 parents out of 15 show up, so that was fabulous. We had a student panel, we had a teacher panel, and then they had free rein to just go visit whatever classrooms they wanted to see. So he told me maybe by the end of November, we'll have word on that, definitely by mid-December. But it went really well. The parents are excited. They still call me, "Have you heard yet? Do we know anything yet?" So it was a good time. We had a lot of things going on. We got winter band concerts coming up and then we have all pro dads meetings every month, get the dads up there with their kiddos, so we would love to see you there.
Can I ask you about Ms. Nickel? So she was named Assistant Principal of the Year for the region, right?
She was, she was, and this is my fault because he was ready to present that tonight, but we didn't do it. Yes, she was named the TASSP Region 11 Assistant Principal of the Year. She then moved on to the next round and had interview last Saturday in Austin and was one of the last three, so we'll announce more when we know more on whether she receives that honor, but she was in the top three for the state of Texas, so. It is, and I was just trying not to steal his thunder because he was planning to do it tonight. All right, but more to come on that. So we...she's number one with us regardless, but we have faith she'll be there, so.
Well, I'm gonna open up by saying, Ms. Buck, we're not gonna catch you in attendance either. I say that because we had our TIP community meeting and Ms. Sanson participated in that and that was one of our focuses, to see how we're gonna get more high school kids to show up on a daily basis now that they're missing a whole day, but they miss in the morning, they miss in the afternoon sometimes, so. Okay, our enrollment is about 660 and the first thing we have here, I'm kinda like Lana, it seems like a long time ago, but it wasn't that long ago. We had our pink out cancer awareness Friday night. This warms my heart because you get to see the cheerleader, the littles, and the parents. And I was in the end zone and I saw about four or five littles run up to Ms. Ortiz and just hug her and say, "Oh, thank you for coming just to see us," right? Which she agreed to, so that's always good to see that they can, from the little on up, see what high school it's all about. The next thing we have is our band and they once again receive straight ones in their division and that got them to go to the area contest. Their season ended, not like they wanted, but we're extremely proud of them and you are gonna hear more about one young man, Julio Guerrero, in the later board report. He's achieved, I think, a first, so Mr. Ward is moving them along. Key club sponsored are Community Hay Ride. I saw Mr. Russell get on and go down and I had never been on the hay ride. I've just always been at the staging, so I thought, "Well, I'm gonna do it too." And I was surprised at how far it went down there and I was also surprised of how well they planned and had things going along the way between witches and zombies and all the costumes they had. It did scare one or two younger kids, but I think that's what it was about. But I'm real pleased with that. We had three trailers. We didn't have a backup. We had a ticket system, so it kinda worked itself out with efficiency from the previous year. Welding. Our welding students toured, is that Bastin Steel? And they experienced some real life work situations and projects. They came back with supplies and got some hands-on activities. We have invited Bastin to join us for our P-Tech partnership meeting. Wednesday, the welding classes will be traveling to Rockdale for their first welding competition for the year. Trunk or Treat. I was taken back. Trunk or Treat was usually at y'all's building, so when we put it in front of the high school, I noticed the amount of people and then the more people and then more people and it was a lot of fun for not only the kiddos but for the adults. I ran out of candy, but the primary helped me, so I got to stay in there for the long term, so. Football's come to an end. And on senior night, our senior band cheer, starets football, student trainers, and photographers walked the field for the last time and as usual, we had some tears from just about everybody, but if you look at that group there, that's gonna be a very sorely misgrouped. Lot of leadership and a lot of personality, I'll put it that way. But all in all, it was a nice event. Our AP Spanish classes, they took a field trip to the Latino Cultura Center. They observed the setting up of the altars for Dia de los Muertos and the tour was completely in Spanish and they had to compare how their community celebrates holidays from different cultures. I think the challenging part there is they do compare it, but they have to come back and they write it in their own language and that's hard for some of our kids. They're raised hearing it and speaking it, but they have the same problems sometimes in their writing, so. I do not have it on there, but you're gonna hear also more about our taffy groups that went, middle and high school, that will be coming up in the next board report. So for upcoming events, I have upward bound. They are still at UT Tyler and LSU, so they're all doing fine. I got an email today, so they should be on their...the way back. I wanna be a...I wanna be a mentor because I wanna go to LSU one more time. I love that place. Okay, Thanksgiving break's coming, our retakes are coming up and we're starting to get our semester exam ready to go. Thank you.
Go to item number seven, presentation of construction manager at risk.
There we go. Mr. Gatewood, members of the board, thank you for having us. My name is Gary Annison, for those who haven't met. I am the Executive Vice President with Core Construction. Joe, it's good to see you again. We're very thankful and excited about the opportunity to serve here in Venus ISD. We put together our qualifications package, spent a lot of time and effort on that, prepared a presentation very specific to the needs here in Venus ISD. We know how exciting of a time it is. It's not every day you get a chance to pass a bond and build a new high school campus, especially Phase One of an exciting larger campus to come in years in the near future. And so we're just really excited about the opportunity to serve in this community. I am our Executive Vice President and I serve our North Texas market here and I'll make myself available for any questions that the board may have of me.
Did anybody have any questions for them while they're here? No? No questions? No questions? We wasted your time driving all the way over here.
Did not waste my time, I promise you that.
Thank you. We'll go to item number eight, presentation of security camera update. Mr. Hudson.
Good evening. I'm gonna provide a general update on the status of the system and then for the questions I can't take care of, we got Chief Wood, who comes in with his expertise from the physical security standpoint. Next slide, please. So we'll start just with a general overview of this is what our campuses have, this is where things are at the moment. And so primary school has 43 total cameras. All four of our campuses, just to prevent repeating myself on following slides, are on the Avigilon system. And so the way that system works, the district has purchased a license for each camera that is physically installed on that campus and then that camera is able to connect to the servers that run the software that make it all work. And so at the moment, the primary school has the, I guess, newest camera server that's also our largest capacity and I'll speak to that here in a little bit on a later slide. But at the moment, it has an actual retention, so this is whenever I go back and look at the oldest footage that we have, it's from 161 days ago. And so that's the day when that system was installed. When you look at the...what the server says, the server says if we were to record every camera constantly, 24/7, we'd have 62 days of continuous recording. The way that the cameras are configured, they're, just to be wise with how we use our cameras or our camera server storage, they...the goal is that they pick up on motion, so when they see something happening, it records that snapshot as well as the sometime period before and after, so that whenever there's motion, you get to see what caused the motion, you see the thing leave the screen and then it goes dark. Next slide. For elementary, 52 total cameras, 26 days of constant recording and it's the same situation with that server. It goes all the way back to whenever we first connected it, so don't seem to have retention issues there. And next slide. Middle school has 82 total cameras. Because the middle school campus is what it is, it has some additional cameras and then also you have boys and girls field houses as well as some athletic facilities all tied into that particular server. And so it's putting in some work. And so largest number of cameras that we have anywhere, actual recording retention goes back to 42 days. It probably goes back longer or it would go back longer. 42 days ago, we made some changes on the server that reset things and so that's why, that's as far back as it will go.
Can you go back two slides? What was the last sentence made down there?
Yep.
I think it's 8 to 10 years old, but what is FCC banned?
So the...in the First Trump administration, the FCC began taking a look at different...OEM means original equipment manufacturer. And so that they...I think the...what you may have heard in the news back then was a company called Huawei making telecommunications equipment that was installed throughout the United States. And so there were some issues, security issues that FCC identified with Huawei and other companies like that that are based in China. And so around that time, the FCC began identifying manufacturers to say that we're not gonna allow this to be sold in the United States and then we also won't allow government entities which through a confusing chain, what we do fall under and so if the FCC bans it, then it's banned for us as well. So at the time we purchased those cameras, they were not banned. After they were purchased and installed, the FCC identified that manufacturer.
That affects somebody working on it, is it? So if one breaks, you can't put it back in?
Well, because of their age, if one breaks, we're...I'm not able to source parts. I would pay more than what it's worth to go on eBay to find a camera that someone has retired. In a few slides, I'll show what our current reserve of those cameras is. We have a decent little reserve to be able to take care of parts. The biggest issue with that is that the cameras won't be receiving any more firmware updates, software updates, security updates, and that's been the case for a while. And to be honest, we didn't learn that they were on that banned list until we went to...you know, it's not like anyone calls you and says, "Hey, did you know your camera's on the banned list?" You would think that there would be some kind of notification for that. And so whenever we were trying...or whenever Aerowave, the company that worked with the high school or worked with Chief Wood to get the new cameras at the high school, was trying to get those cameras installed on their system, ran into some issues there and discovered that all of the documentation from the camera manufacturer, the system manufacturer, all of it said that it was good. And then when you go and peel the onion and layer by layer by layer, you realize, "Oh, somewhere in there, someone realized it was on the banned list and made it no longer compatible." None of the documentation was done. So whenever we agreed with Aerowave to bring those cameras on that system, they, in good faith, thought that those cameras were compatible. If there's a silver lining to that, that they were able to get the cameras functional on the system. It takes a little bit more effort for us to go and change settings on the cameras, but it's still...
Does that require any immediate action by us as far as...
No. Where we're...yeah, where we're at's where we're at and it's...everything is pretty much a pause on that. If they...you know, the cybersecurity world is a strange place. If a vulnerability is revealed, we could be open, but the good news is none of those cameras have a direct access to the internet, so it's all...they live on our network. Someone would have to breach our network to get to those cameras. Our network itself is secure even if those cameras aren't. Would I want those cameras at my house, you know, open to the internet? I wouldn't, but under a secure network, they are safe. I'm gonna go to the high school slide. There we go. And high school was the campus that got taken care of with all new cameras and so you'll notice a good...a bit fewer cameras at the high school because the...when you think of...when this system has a camera, that one particular camera may have four, three or four lenses on it. And so a lot of the cameras at the high school are shooting in multiple directions, providing multiple views. A good handful are 360-degree cameras that let you observe everything that's going on around it. So really good quality equipment. And then at the moment, the server that they're connected with has actual retention of 30 days and so when I go back, the oldest footage that I can find on there is 30 days old. Because those cameras are fully compatible with the system, it does some fun things to help save some of the storage capacity on that, so.
So these are the brand new ones, right?
Yep. These are the brand new ones at the high school. It's gonna...it's for a day and a half, it's gonna keep the quality, really high quality, so if something happens, they can go in and zoom and zoom and zoom. After that, it begins to step down the quality and so for the next 14 days, the quality is lower and that's what we end up having for the duration until it's deleted by new footage. Next slide. And then we have 42 cameras that are still running on video insight system and so that's our legacy camera system. Really any other facility that isn't a campus, that's where those cameras are gonna be. Looking at the... I think my notes might've got cut off on that one, but the retention on those is 11 days. Those particular cameras, each one is different depending on the need, so some of them may be recording all the time, some of them may be picking up on motion to record, but really it's based on what Chief Wood and the director of that facility see as necessary for what's recorded. Next slide. And then we also have our Ag Barn and then transportation facility and then all the restrooms at our high school middle school campus have a vape sensor and that vape sensor is also tied to a camera that is outside of it. And so the Vercata system takes care of those facilities as well as the vape sensors. That system has licenses that are done differently than anything else that we have. Vercata is a great system, it's top of the line, it is crystal clear video, it is also more of a Cadillac price compared...
Are all those cameras in district government running now?
Yep.
We're missing a few that were damaged.
Sensor was damaged and it's up and we got a new sensor placed in there.
So every one of our Vercata cameras are operational now?
To my knowledge, is there one?
That was damaged when someone sprayed water out there, from my understanding, that's probably the only one.
But the...if you're referring to cameras that initially weren't working at the high school, everything that we paid for at the high school is up and running at the moment.
Anything around the school district and inside the educational areas, those are all working with the Vercata system?
And so the Vercata license runs out December 31st, 2028 and so between now and then, we will have to get a plan together to get a different solution. And so all of those locations are gonna require different hardware and our goal is to put everything on the Avigilon system, so it's all as universal as we can get it over the long term. But 2028, thank goodness, isn't tomorrow and so we've got time to... And so we've got time to do some planning and I've been, been already talking with, with Ms. Page about what that, that dollar amount might need to be. And then the, next slide. Chief Wood has, has purchased three brand-new fisheye cameras. He's been working with Ms. Buck to find the, the best bang for the buck location for the middle school to put those. And so those cameras are gonna allow campus administration to have multiple views from each camera. And so that, that will be a, a, a great value in addition to the security of the campus.
With, with those three additional fisheye cameras, I'm looking at maybe possibly having four additional licenses free up to where we can put some of the cameras that we removed from the high school and replace over into areas that we might need at the middle school. We just have to make sure that we have enough cord for those ports that are up there already to go to and everything else. But we can definitely probably add four additional cameras on the middle school. And it won't take up any other license that we have to pay or anything else.
And that, that is one good thing that, that, that the district did is because we, we were able to, whenever we buy new cameras, the new cameras are expensive. But you can normally replace one or, or two, two or three more cameras by, by getting one camera of good quality. And so over time, we won't really need to buy very many more licenses. It's just getting the right camera, the right location to free up licenses to give you additional capacity elsewhere. And then at, at Chief Wood's request, the technology department replaced the exterior domes on a lot of the, the cameras at the middle, elementary and primary schools. But because they've been there for eight to ten years, you get UV damage. And so what, what we initially thought were just dirty camera lenses that needed a, a lot of Windex, it turns out that, that Windex wasn't gonna touch that. And so we, we took the, the retired cameras that came out of the high school, took the domes off and then were able to, to replace the domes. If you go to the next slide, looks like we did forty-two total exterior cameras. And so if you go to the following slide, it'll, it'll show you just a, but before and after picture. I, I would say that what was, what was left was probably an average view, you know, for if, a camera that you would say, well, that's a, that's a rough-looking view. There were some that looked worse than that, some looked better than that, but the view on the right, the only difference is just clear glass.
Yeah, I sent Warren a, a project and everything to look at. It was multiple, multiple slides that I took, of each camera that needed the lenses replaced on them or something. And within three days, he had them all up. So it made a big difference. You can actually re-license, place and everything else now.
Good weather helps. And so, but, but because we, we cannibalized old, old parts to, to be able to get a better product for, for the campuses, our, our current inventory status for, for the old-style cameras that we have. So it, it's the, it's really one, a single model of camera that's nearly everywhere in the district except for the high school. So we have, have six of those cameras that are in a hundred percent good shape. And then we have six, six cameras beyond that that don't have the dome anymore. So that gives us some additional capacity. So when, when something gets damaged, we don't have to go out and try and find something or, or have to, to go find money to, to replace it. And then as, as campuses, or as, as the district finds money to replace cameras at campuses, that frees up additional old hardware that we can use to, to perpetuate that old system. And then if you will head to the next slide, just some, some parting thoughts. So we, we have, you know, a, a good number of the cameras in the district are eight to ten years old. That, that there will come a time when, when those will need to get, get, get replaced. At the moment, things are functional and it seems to meet our needs. We are looking at the expiration of our Vercata licenses coming up. And so we'll, we'll be, we'll be exploring more cost-effective options that will give us full ownership of the license and the camera as opposed to having to lease, perpet- or continually lease the licenses, which gets expensive. And then the next big, big improvement project that we're planning will be taking the, the current primary school camera server, which has the, the most capacity, and migrating that over to the high school so that the, the high school cameras get the, the benefit of having additional storage capacity and, and more retention from that. Any, any other questions?
What's an update on, we were doing some mediation with the camera company. Was that a Vigilon or whatever we were doing?
AeroWave.
We thought we were gonna work and then we already paid them nine percent of what we owed them. Y'all were working on mediation or something?
Yeah, it's, it, it took a while, but that, that they, they have fulfilled every bit of the contract that, that we held them to. We got, we got, got the training that we asked for. That, that was, got positive feedback from campus leaders on that. So for, for that camera project that started, I guess nearly this time last year, it is, it is fully wrapped up and, and we, we received everything we paid for.
I had heard you say our future cameras you wanted to keep on that same system. You know, for all the trouble we had fighting this for a year and a half, is that, we're still planning on staying with this, this system for the next?
Well, the, 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 the system and the vendor are two, two different entities. And so there, there, there are, there are many vendors that sell things or, or that support a Vigilon camera system. So, and we're, we're in communication with other vendors just to see what, what kind of prices they have. So as, you know, of course, anytime we're gonna make a purchase, we're gonna get three quotes, we're gonna do our due diligence to find the best, best value.
And they're working with us.
So with Vigilon, it was the vendor we were using to purchase?
A, a little bit was the vendor and then the, the other part that they couldn't foresee and we, and we certainly didn't foresee was that our, our cameras weren't officially supported, even though all the documentation said that our cameras were supported. And then once you make enough phone calls, suddenly all the, all the, the websites updated one day to show that they're no longer supported. So it was a unfortunate situation. I, I, I don't believe that the vendor had the ability to, to see that anymore than we did. When we looked at the same documentation that they did to, to see that, yes, this hardware looks like it's supported. And then when you do, when you try to make it happen, the company goes back and changes and says, by the way, that's not supported.
Yeah, and anytime that we start looking at cameras and everything else, they're, they're jumping. If I tell them, hey, I've got another person we're looking at, they're, they're trying to beat their price for us. So they're, they're trying to get in good favor with us and everything else and everything that we do.
Any other questions? No, no, thank you, Warren.
Yes, ma'am.
Go to item nine, presentation of cooperative purchasing report. And I didn't have my mic on, sorry. Did anybody have any questions on that? No?
Thank you.
I'm assuming all these are, you're still recommending staying with all these go-ups?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. Go to item ten, presentation of campus targeted improvement plan. Dr. Morgan?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to share this with you tonight. Rosie, does this clicker work? Or are you doing it? You did. Okay. So who submits a targeted improvement plan? So you, you have all, already seen all of the data on our twenty-four, twenty-five accountability. And so this is just a, a review of that information. Nothing has changed since Mrs. Camacho presented that earlier this school year. But because of the ratings, we do have a couple of campuses that are identified for submitting to the state a targeted improvement plan. Rosie, if you don't mind clicking. So you can see the two campuses identified as needing targeted support and improvement are Venus Elementary and Venus Middle School. And then if you'll click one more time, Venus High School was, although not identified for improvement, we did receive the ESF Focus Support Grant for twenty-four through twenty-six a couple of years ago, when they were in comprehensive support and improvement, if you remember that. And so we are finishing out the grant this year. And because of that, Venus High School is also going to submit a targeted improvement plan. So primary school does not get rated on its own, but they get the pleasure of sharing the rating with the elementary school. And so they are along for the ride. And they, so the primary and elementary school have a joint targeted improvement plan. Okay, please click to the next slide, thank you. So what has to go in a targeted improvement plan? These components come from TEA. We will submit a form addressing all of these areas and answering the questions that they've given us. So we're just gonna go through each one so you can see what we have included for the different campuses. Go ahead. So first thing is our student outcome goals. We have the performance goals, so we have to include that. We are actually only gonna submit our reading and math performance goals, but we definitely wanted to address science and social studies because we, all of those do get reported and count in our accountability. TEA is very heavily focused on reading and math across the board. And so you can see the different percentages based on last year's performance. For primary and elementary, we just looked at all tests, all, all grade levels, all tests for reading and then for math. And then, of course, science is only fifth grade and at middle school, only eighth grade takes science and social studies. High school, we went ahead and just broke out all five EOCs since there are only five of them. And these, this is what we'll report. And these goals are also what, for example, Venus Middle School is still in a school improvement grant called School Action and we report performance goals through that platform as well. And so they're the same goals, where we don't have these goals over here and the School Action goals over there and our district improvement plan, plan goals over there. We're focused on, on these measures. And then we also need to set goals for our domain three component of our accountability, which is closing the gaps. And so you can see on the top row how many total points are possible in each of these areas of domain three. So these all relate to closing the gaps between our student groups. How they do the, the different targeted groups at academic achievement, are, are students growing? ALP, of course, is English Language Proficiency, so our EB students, and then overall student success. So we are trying to move the needle on all of these. You can see, for example, VHS had four out of four last year for ALP status, so that's great, we're gonna do that again. All the other ones, though, we're definitely going to try to increase the points, points there. And all of that comes from how they do on STAR.
So the, I know they made a change. So like currently, sixth graders who are advanced take seventh grade tests. Seventh grade advanced takes eighth grade tests. Eighth grade advanced take ninth grade tests. They put a new point system up or when does that start?
So the growth points, and Mrs. Camacho, please correct me if I'm wrong. The growth points don't change based on what test they take. It's whatever test they took the year before. If they make the same performance rating or they get half point? And then if they, if they go to the higher performance. So if they went meets this year on seventh grade STAR, but then next year they take Algebra I and they go to Masters, they get the full point. So the, the, what test they take doesn't affect the growth. I do not think there is a possibility of three points.
They have a half point or a point per student. But they also break the performance levels down per, like, do not meets and approaches have two. So you have a low do not meets and a high do not meets. You have a low approaches and a high approaches. And so if a student is in low approaches and they move in, even though they're in the same performance level, they move to high approaches, they get credit for that. So it's moving for do not meets and approaches is within the performance level and then meets and Masters are their own.
I was, I was talking about specifically the ones who are taking the, the test above, above their.
Yes, unfortunately, that does not factor in to what they get for their growth.
So the training we went to the other day, that is coming. They said you'll get a, you could earn an extra point and a half, but that's not until twenty-twenty-eight.
Oh, my question, I, I had that, I had that one coming across, but I didn't know when that started.
Right, they have to take the grade level above test and pass it to get the, but that's not until twenty-twenty-eight.
Growth is where we kind of, is kind of where we missed, so.
Yes.
I was hoping that went in soon because if we get a point and a half for them, then that, that gets us to growth a lot faster.
Yes.
But also in twenty-twenty-eight, we have the new, everything will change, so. We'll all be different, we'll have three.
They just release it little piece by piece, they just keep you interested by reading, so I was, I make sure I, I.
Yep, sorry about that for not understanding the question. Are there any other questions about these pieces here? Okay, Rosie, if you can move forward, thank you. So we had to select a school improvement strategy. These were the options provided to us and really most of them don't apply. We don't really qualify to be an ace campus. We're definitely not in a spot where we need to close or reassign campus or campus leader. Improving, improving the graduation rate does not apply to elementary and middle school. School model change is actually what we did through the School Action Grant. And so we're not gonna change that model, we're still a P-twenty model, so we, we don't wanna go there. And then right now, we definitely do not want a turnaround partnership. That definitely is taking away our district autonomy and having someone else come alongside to make decisions. So we, we want to focus on what we can control and improve, which is curriculum and instruction improvements. So if you can move forward. So we are also going to report what improvement grants and what capacity building partners we have from right now, in the past, right now, and then moving forward. So our current or past grants, hopefully some of those words up there look familiar. We've been talking about them for a few years now. So we're in our last year of School Action and that's at the middle school. We've been doing School Action for a total of four years now. And that is the turning around or redesigning the campus as a P-twenty model campus. We are currently in Strong Foundations Planning for Math. So we have just finished one of the biggest milestones, which is writing a math instructional framework. And then we will start working on implementing that framework through, through a couple of different pieces. Our leadership team is actually meeting next week, or I'm sorry, the week after Thanksgiving to finalize how we're gonna do that. And then, as I already mentioned, our high school is in the last year of the ESF Focus Support Grant. Through Lasso Cycle Four, which will go into effect in the spring and then for next year, we have applied for LIFT, LIFT PLC support, and then also a school improvement curriculum and instruction support in case we don't qualify for the LIFT grant. And LIFT is the new name for what we've been doing with Strong Foundations. And so the state is trying to consolidate some of the grants that they have going on. And if, if we are able to get that grant, it will give us access again to a technical assistance provider like we've had with CEN and Sustained Ed Leaders, and you can see their names up there, to come alongside us with coaching and support and training to implement some of the curriculum and instruction improvements that we're trying to make. And then our external and internal partners, Collegiate Education is, is, has been a strong and consistent support for us and they're not gonna go away, even though we're not gonna be involved in School Action next year. Sustained Ed Leaders is our Strong Foundations Planning support. ESC Regional Eleven is currently providing some coaching for our campus principals. They are also managing the ESF Focus Support Grant support for us. So they're always a huge help. And then also this year, Mr. Gatewood had the very, very, very brilliant idea to hire Dr. Rebecca Vega as our Assistant Superintendent. And so we are able to identify her as an eternal support because of her experience, not just as a campus principal, but through the Texas Instructional Leadership and campus administrator coaching, all of the things that she's done for the past few years, bringing that knowledge and experience to us to help build capacity in all of our leadership. So that is a, a really good thing to be able to put on there. Okay, if you can move on. So curriculum instruction, what, what we have to address. It really, there's really nothing on here that's new, but we are gonna focus on some more, let's say strategic measures and some intentional planning that Dr. Vega is gonna help bring that consistency to, that, the overarching umbrella to, that I, I think we have been missing in the past. So we are going to address curriculum. We, we need to answer the questions, what will we, what will we use? How we ensure, how will we ensure that fidelity of implementation? We need to address assessment. When are we gonna assess student learning? How will we ensure alignment to the grade level teaks? And then we, of course, have to address instruction. So what will be the expectations that will lead to increased student performance? And we do that through the professional learning community. That's actually one of the questions that we have to answer, is how will we do PLC? And so we need to take a very careful look at how will we structure and utilize the PLC model to ensure educators are teaching and assessing the teaks at appropriate levels of rigor. And so Rosie, if you can click just once. So curriculum, we are gonna continue with Amplify and HMH for our reading and language arts curriculum. K-five is Amplify, six-twelve is HMH. We've had good success, success with both of those. And so we are pretty confident moving into next year that we'll, we'll keep that. We are, we are, we are not considering, we are definitely going to move to a new HQIM for math. We have had some, a lot of, a lot of feedback from teachers across all of our K through eight classrooms about struggles and concerns that they've had with the STEM Scopes curriculum. One of the supports Sustained Ed Leaders did for us was to hold focus groups on our last professional, professional development day to talk about some of the teachers' concerns between what they have to teach and how they are supposed. to talk about some of the teachers' concerns between what they have to teach and how they are supposed to teach the research-based instructional strategies. And the curricular materials definitely came out as a big concern for many people. So we are, we're definitely going to go through those steps. We are strongly considering Bluebonnet Learning. It is what the state provides and recommends, and so that's definitely at the top of the list. And we will make sure we bring that to you when we have a final decision. Another thing we have to do is ensure that we have the instructional minutes to teach the curriculum that we choose, provide the training that's necessary, not just for, you know, one day or a half a day at the beginning of the year, but ongoing training. And then the last piece is to utilize the TEES Resource System, which Mr. Gatewood brought back to our attention when he came onboard as superintendent. And we're going to be moving forward with that so that we have, so teachers have a consistent and consolidated resource for understanding the TEES and the things that go along with that. If you can click again for next one. Assessment, we have to report our assessment plan. We are going to continue moving forward with district-created CBAs, so our curriculum coordinators create those. We will use our HQIM-provided unit assessments, which is what we do, but we're going to make sure that we're using them at the right time, that, that teachers are previewing them, those sort of things. Teacher-created CFAs, which is just a common format of assessment, which several of our PLC teams have put into place this year through different initiatives. The things that the high school is doing through their training with the service center is really focused on that process. And then all of this with ongoing training in the PLC. And then the piece about instruction, we want to make sure that our walkthrough look fours are aligned to the Arby's, which is the research-based instructional strategies. We're going to make sure our leaders have calibration and trainings, especially on T-Tests and those look fours and how all of those things work together. And then making sure that everybody has strong training in unit and lesson internalization, which is basically taking the chunks from the curriculum and assessment pieces and making sure we understand how is that playing out in instruction. And then if you'll click one more time for this slide. The, what we need to do for our professional learning community is to really adhere to protocols for all of those pieces. The internalization, developing the common format of assessments, analyzing data, and then planning teacher teams, how are we going to address the areas of concern? And as I've already mentioned, a big change to the PLC process is the leadership coaching that our campus principals will have this year. Okay, so the next section of the improvement plan is capacity building, which is basically answering the questions. Who needs what training and coaching? How will we monitor progress? So our principal manager, it, it will, will be Dr. Vega from this point forward, which I'm very happy about. And so she's actually going to take over the DDI training and coaching that the high school is going through. And so even though she's coming out of the role of that coach from the service center, she's going to continue learning as the principal manager, so shifting that, that hat or putting on a new hat and getting coaching from the service center on implementing the DDI processes from that lens. So that's going to be for the rest of the school year. And then our principals already have started their FLIPS coaching. And please forgive me, I can't remember what the FLIPS stands for, but I'm pretty sure the L is leadership. And that is coming from our service center. And so they each have opportunity to meet with an administrator coach several times throughout the year and get one-on-one coaching. We're going to have, make sure we have training in those PLC protocols and the Arby's, as I already mentioned. Our instructional leaders, and that is going to include all of our campus leaders, our assistant principals, instructional coaches, the CNI team, everyone who supports instruction in those ways. We want to make sure we all have strong training in those areas. And then, of course, our teachers will definitely need training in all of the things that we've listed. The other thing we are, will, will describe is how we're going to differentiate support, especially for our new teachers and perhaps our teachers who need additional support. And so we're going to work with our instructional coaches to make sure those teachers get targeted support. Okay, and then we report our milestones. So we're going to flesh these out with some more progress checkpoints. But you can see the, in general, this is the, the milestone. So the FLIPS coaching, which has already started, and that will go through the end of this year. T-Test calibration and coaching, we hope to start that and when we come back in January strong, and that'll continue throughout next school year. So this plan does take us through the end of next year, May of 2027. We're not going to train on T-Tests calibration one time and then be done with it. It's an ongoing process. And it's really, that's really the same thing for all of those things. So HQIM training, I went ahead and put November because our middle school teacher, math teachers asked for training in the STEM Scopes. Knowing that it may or may not be the last year for it, we still have to do the rest of this year using that curriculum. And so we're going to use some of our School Action funds to pay for training for them. PLC protocols, we're going to regroup and re, recalibrate what protocols we're using and then hit the ground running in January with those. TEES Resource System training, the spring will really focus on the CNI team in training and understanding that system and so that they can be prepared to write the curriculum documents for next year. And then later in the spring and over the summer, we'll, we will train teachers on using that system. And then our 26, 27 curriculum and assessment plan actually starts in January as we start planning for it. All right, next slide. And then our performance management. Mr. Gatewood's been very clear about how he wants to make sure that he and Dr. Vega and the rest of the administrative team are working together to support principals, support our leadership, and making sure we're having check-ins through the right lenses. So the, using the CBA and walkthrough data to determine, are we doing what we said we were going to do? Is it being effective? The ESF priorities, that, that would be the effective schools framework. So making sure we're, we're using that success criteria that has already been put out there for what works. Providing you all quarterly progress reports to that, of what we, of this plan, of what we said we're going to do. And then mid-year and end year, end of year data reviews. Okay, last one. And then resources, they are going to ask us to list out the things that cost money so that we are making sure that we are prepared for it. And so the HQIM is still to be determined. For example, if we do decide to go with Bluebonnet Learning for math, that is the free open education resource and all we would need to be paying for is the print resources, which we get extra money for that from the instructional materials allotment. FLIPS coaching, like I already mentioned, we've used a School Action Grant for that this year. TEES Resource System, we're working on that right now. That, that should become a foundational piece to our curriculum approach. So we'll, Ms. Page and I will work on how we can make sure that's part of the local budget so that it, it doesn't go away again. And then PLC training will depend a little bit on what, if, what LASSO grants we get or don't get. And if not, we'll, we'll definitely tap into Title II if we need to contract with, for example, the service center on PLC training. And I think the last slide is just questions. Anybody have any questions?
I have several questions. One is, and I've had this conversation a little bit with my superintendent that I wasn't aware that we had gotten ourselves into this much trouble. I have been vocal that I haven't been satisfied with how we've been scoring and always have an excuse. So here's the questions I have because I want detailed answers. One is, we were using a lot of these programs that we're like in the second, third, fourth year of, you know, the, what we call, when you, that you get grant, grants and so forth. Obviously, they haven't been working, are they going to work the last year? Just keep these in mind. So I, two is, all these changes we're doing, do we have enough time to get them implemented and have a positive result in time? And three is, oh, a lot of these programs that we're implementing to save ourselves, basically, were we not doing similar things already? Or are we just now doing it now? And if we haven't been doing it, why not? And then the last thing is, if we fail to meet those standards this time, what happens to each campus? What happens to the district? Point blank. I've read a lot of stuff, I hear a lot of stuff, but I just want an exact answer on that. So there's quite a bit of information there I need. A lot of it overlaps, but I want to, I want to hear it and I want to understand it because obviously somewhere in the last couple of years, I've missed it.
Please, please.
I'll go ahead and start with the consequences because the, the consequences are pretty dire. If we don't meet them, but I anticipate this due, meeting them. Number one, we'd have to move to something called a TAP. TAP is a turnaround plan. Like say, for instance, if middle school doesn't improve, we'd move a TAP because right now we're on a tip. That's a turnaround campus plan. What happens, that turnaround campus plan would submit that to the state. And the state does not, number one, they don't approve a four-day school week for that plan. So we'd have to switch to a five-day school week. One of the most severe consequences they could tell, direct me to do TA is to replace leadership at the campus level. That, they could say that. Say this here is a situation, this is a turnaround, and I will be required to replace campus leaderships and different principals. That's the most extreme case scenario if we don't get off this situation. The other ones here, using a lot of these here programs, I'm going to defer those to question number one to Dr. Morgan. Reason being, as Assistant Superintendent, I wasn't involved in curriculum a lot at all, so I really can't answer that. But I can tell you one thing, I do see, I think we had a lot of different programs going. And when you, when I do walkthroughs, I see greatness in pockets. What that hints to me, we have good systems, but they're not applied fidelity. The systems are there, the backbone's there. We just need to go ahead and make sure that if Howard Gatewood is in, no matter what class I'm in for Algebra, for seventh grade math, or fourth grade math, that I'm going to receive the same level of instruction per teacher. And we've got those systems, we just have to ensure those are enforced with fidelity. This is how we do business, this is how we do lesson internalization. These are some activities we collaborated on. Cause I toured some PLCs and I don't see the same thing in all PLCs. Sometime they're good, sometimes they're not so good. Same thing with instruction, I see great instruction, then I will see some not so great instruction. But I do, don't think that the things we have had in place, they were enforced with fidelity. Now, I can't really answer why they weren't enforced with fidelity, sir. Maybe Dr. Morgan can shed some light on that.
Right, so I can tell you what, what I know, what I, where, what we have tried for sure. So, for example, the, the School Action Grant at the middle school, we, gave us support with CEN. And before that, if you remember, a few years ago, we, we were talking about the Raising Blended Learners, the Blended Learning Grant. And we've seen those things really take, take root and, and have a positive effect in the Reading Language Arts side of it. And so if we went back to look at our scores, you could see our, our middle school reading scores last year were really good. And we, we've seen that steady improvement. And so, and that's what we want to see across the board. What I would say, the, what we've had in reading versus math is more consistent teachers and maybe more content expertise in, in teachers. And so the other, on the flip side with math, what, what we've had is, since COVID, and even a little bit before COVID, we started to see a decline in math performance. And then with COVID and all of the craziness and absences of this year, there were definitely gaps created. But the perfect storm really hit because that was at the same time that the state replaced the math, the STAR test was the new STAR redesign, if you remember that language from a few years ago, with the new math TEES started to get tested at the same time. And so it, it was really a series of fundamental, like really foundational changes that all happened at the same time as COVID was happening. And, and honestly, we've, we have not caught up from that. And so that's, that is why we put into place things like using the STEM Scopes curriculum because it was at the high level of rigor that the TEES needed to be at. It, it teaches the standards the way the new, they're not new anymore, but the current math TEES try to build conceptual understanding. However, this is the fourth year of STEM Scopes. We, we have struggled with it as, as a whole. Teachers have struggled with it, there are a lot of.
Have we, have we struggled with it or we have, have we struggled holding fidelity?
I would say.
So if a teacher decides they don't like STEM Scopes, they're just not going to do it?
Yeah, that has happened, absolutely, yes.
You have a, you have a program, and that was my question about curriculum. I think we've changed curriculum three times since I've been on the board. This is my year and a half. So is it, is it STEM Scopes or whatever, whatever you're talking about, that's just the one you said? Or is it the fact that we're not holding our teachers accountable or we're not teaching to fidelity? I don't, I don't, that's, that's my, that's my big question of, so now we're going to, one of your slides said, you know, one of the things is our Assistant Superintendent is going to hold all these, all these people accountable and then hold them fidelity. Well, for the rest of this year, we're going to hold them accountable for STEM Scopes. Then we're going to flip it in June and we're going to tell all the teachers, oh, hey, all that fidelity we did on STEM Scopes? Scratch that, we're going to Bluebonnet. And then we're going to spend a year on Bluebonnet. And that's, that's just been my experience so far. So I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just want to make sure that, you know, first of all, I want, I want to reply to Greg. Remember, this is on a moving scale. TEA keeps moving everything. So we have great teachers and we have great administrators. And one thing it doesn't show is this doesn't show growth. So when, when you inherit a kid in the, in the third grade who's, who can't read at all, but they, but they have that kid reading two grade levels, by the end of the year, they improve two grade levels. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Camacho, if they don't pass STAR, we get zero growth points. So even though we improved them two grades in one year, we get zero growth points. And then the next year's teacher improves them for two years, we get zero growth points if they don't pass STAR. So I want to, you're, you're exactly, you're, you're right being concerned, but also want to, anybody listening, anybody watching, we have great employees and they are working hard to do. But it's also on a moving, the state's also on a moving scale.
But question on the moving scale, we're not the only district in that unique situation. So everything that you just said, and I'm glad you kind of interrupted that right there because we've heard COVID, we've heard the perfect storm, we've heard TEA has changed, we've heard the STAR revamp, we've heard all that, but that is not unique to our district. That is across the state of Texas. What we're concerned about is everything that you just mentioned. Every district in the state of Texas has likely gone through that. But some, a majority of, whatever that is, have found their way through it. We have consistently not. We have consistently performed, even with everybody else going through the same changes, we are not making any growth. So the perfect storm, that is all in the past, I think is kind of what we're frustrated here with is that we ask for the whys and we always go right back to COVID. Right, we have got to figure out how to get over that and through that. And we've got to start being proactive instead of reactive. We are still reactive to a 2020 situation. And I think that's what I get so frustrated about is yes, everything that's changing, every district in the state of Texas is going through it. We are not unique to that situation. What we are unique to is our performance. And whether it's teaching.
Or our consistency.
Whatever it is, right? We have got to figure out a way to get through that, whether it starts within the classroom, right? If we're not teaching to fidelity for four years on STEM Scopes and we're struggling, that's an administration issue. We are not, we're not holding our people accountable. Why are we allowing people to be in their fourth year of STEM Scopes and we are still struggling? That's the answer I want to know. It's not a, or, or why are we consistently switching curriculum?
Well, and I don't know the answers nor do I.
I don't either, right, yeah.
That's us getting in the weeds of board, but we, we approved curriculum.
It's not the weeds, we're approving the curriculum and I want to know why we're four years.
That's what I'm saying, so, and I, my answer is, is it, is it our administration not, not holding accountability? Is it teachers refusal to, do we put on a dog and pony show when somebody comes by and then, but, but then we don't use STEM Scopes the rest of the time? That's a question of, you know, I'd love to sit out here and say we had an answer, but you know, part of it is, we keep changing curriculums. It's like we don't get the result we want, so the teachers go, hey, it's, it's STEM Scopes problem. Let's change, let's switch to another curriculum. And then a year and a half later, we don't get scores we want and we, it's so-and-so's fault, so let's change again.
Well, and.
That was a long, I know it's a long time.
No, and I just want to put in there too, also, if you go back and talk to some of our people that work here, they say they do not get training on it. So, I mean, we've, we've addressed that at the beginning of the school year too. So the training was not there for a lot of our, a lot of our employees. And they're having to ask and get the training now. So I mean, I'm not saying it, I'm, I'm agreeing, a hundred percent agree because it's not just us, but for some reason, like Greg said, the first time I was on the board, he brought it up at that point in time. We do not progress yearly. We don't progress two years, we don't progress in three years.
And I think it's inherently unfair for us to put it all on the middle school. It's the middle, it, right, middle school is our sink or swim. That is absolutely unfair to that campus to say, you know what, Ms. Buck, it's all on you. That's unfair. Right, do we have some opportunities there? Absolutely, but we keep talking about middle school is the sink or swim and that's just unfair. Like we have got to do this all across the board? Yeah, all three principals in the back, please stand up. Yeah, all three principals in the back, please stand up, like, please, please help us understand.
Let me, let me add for STEM scopes for like the primary level. So kindergarten, five, five-year-olds, right? Some of them go to pre-K, majority of them don't. They show up, STEM scopes requires within the first week of curriculum that they are composing and decomposing to five. They don't even know their numbers. They don't know their name, they don't know their letters. They couldn't recognize their name. So we get kids and we are already behind at the primary. And when I say my teachers teach with fidelity, I'm going to brag and say I have the best teachers in this district. Because they are fantastic. So if we're already playing catch-up at four, five, six-year-olds, right? What do we have to do different? But that's our battle. So I wanted to share with y'all because that's what we talk about weekly in our PLCs.
Is it just, is it just STEM scopes that's like that? Or is that every, every curriculum is like that?
I will tell you that we have looked at Bluebonnet this year and we've compared them in the pacing guides. And so Bluebonnet does spend about six to eight weeks teaching the foundational skills. STEM scopes never did that. STEM scopes is great. If we were in a district that probably had more affluent students coming in, right? More background knowledge, they already knew their numbers coming in, it would be easier. But our students don't, and so we have to teach them.
And how many years have you had STEM scopes? So at what point do we, and not just you, but at what point do we come in as an administrator and say, hey, hey, I, this isn't working for us?
Yes ma'am, and I, and I can answer that question there. STEM scopes, and you can ask the elementary team. I actually just took a drive over there, opened the books, took a look at them, went through them. There's quite a few gaps when you're talking about STEM scopes in that curriculum. That is why the change needed in that curriculum. There's a lot of different gaps. And I just went over to Mrs. Reiser's room and I just sat in the room, looked through the workbooks, looked through the teacher edition, did the same thing in the steel room, just to get a background knowledge of, hey, what is the difference in this here STEM scope instead of a Bluebonnet curriculum? Here's the thing here, I'm going to take total ownership of this here, that's just who I am. And we will get off this here, you're right, it's not one school situation like, it's not. If kids are showing up to the middle school or to the primary, to the elementary with those gaps, or to the high school with those gaps, we have to correct those gaps. Now, and I tell you what the principals notice about me. I pay attention to the data, the minute that CBA is taken, I'm on there looking at that data, looking through it, comparing that data as to those students are growing. So you is right, but you are right, but I take complete ownership of this here. Because whether I, I was in this seat at this here, that in the past, doesn't matter. I'm here right now and that won't occur. We will get off this here situation, not if this is off this situation. I made a pledge when I took this here job, that we will be the best school district in Johnson County. It's not going to happen overnight, but it will happen and it's going to happen slowly. And I appreciate that, I just want to be clear on my point. My point, I only use STEM scopes because that was the last thing she said. My, my point wasn't about STEM scopes. Four years ago, a whole bunch of people got into a room, we, I'm sure we held all committees and everybody looked at that and they went, this is the answer, this is what we want. And then less than two years later, I, I don't, I don't understand what changed. And so if we've, if STEM scopes had a bunch of gaps, then, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's investigated, maybe we didn't look into it enough. Maybe we just listened to three pitches by the best, and I don't know. I, I was a principal for a long time, we didn't change curriculums this often. But I, I don't, I was also never in elementary or, or so, I, I don't understand that. So I don't understand that, but I just, at some point, we need to commit to something, somewhere and then, and make it work. So I just wanted to be clear that STEM scopes wasn't my target. I don't, whatever y'all choose is what y'all choose. But as a board, it seems like we're changing it. We, we already had a change request earlier, like, like two meetings ago for another, for one software, for another curriculum. And now it sounds like we're going to do the exact same thing with math again.
Oh, sorry, okay, quick thing about HQIM. So prior to the HQIM list, right? You had all these resources available from the state of Texas and I think they had to be like forty percent aligned to the standard. So you had this resource that was only forty percent aligned and that was what TA said was okay. Then they moved in with HQIM and then it has to be a hundred percent aligned to the standards, et cetera, with some more rigorous qualifications. So STEM scopes is on the HQIM list. So I'm sure at that time, I was not here. At that time, we decided to go with STEM scopes, it's an HQIM. There's going to be gaps with any product, right? Even Bluebonnet, there will be things that we're like, we need to make this a little better, we need to tweak it. I think just from my short time here, two weeks, right? What I see is not so much about the resources, but it's about a gap or a lack of systems and structures that are district-wide. So we have the things, we have some like pockets of things, but we don't really have systems and structures that ensure accountability, ensure that we're holding teachers, administrators and our whole, you know, district personnel accountable to, you know, all these key practices such as PLC structures, assessment data protocols and that kind of thing. So I really think, I really believe that Venus has all the components. We just need to get some systems and structures in place and hold people accountable, honestly. I mean, you are right, if we ask you or tell you to use this curriculum, that's what we expect you to be using, et cetera. So I think we can get there, all these questions are awesome. But I, I think with Mr. Gatewood and myself working together with CNI team, we can put some systems and structures in place.
If we just had a pre-K, an instructional pre-K, you know, that concentrated on reading proficiency, that'd be outstanding.
Greg has another question.
That's, I want to do like Randall did and make myself clear. I, I'm not accusing employees of failing. I, I, I'm accusing this district of failing. We're real good about building fields and schools, we fixed to build a high school. We're real good about that, but this conversation we're having right now is the first real curriculum, not, oh, they're trying to sell us another curriculum, but a real pointed discussion that education is what we're about. And we need to make sure, and I know Randall, the, the scale has been sliding since I've been on school board. It's thirty years, I mean, it always slides, it slides for everybody. There's still people making As, a lot of people making Bs. And the D end of it, there's a lot of them too, but, but that's not what the end we want to be on. So for whatever reason, we, we are failing at the moment. And, and we need to assertively put it together. I think the board is doing what it needs to. We're giving everybody what they're asking for. Now, we've hired new people that hopefully will direct us in the right direction. So we're working on that, but I really wanted to start this conversation. And the only way I know how to do things sometimes is ask the hardest question.
And I definitely agree, we, we definitely aren't happy with status quo. I'm, I'm not a fan of TA. I just want to be perfectly honest, you go look, you look at all those A campuses and you tell me the one thing they have in common. And then you go look at those AB campuses and you tell me the one thing they have in common, especially at the elementary and the middle school level. I'm not going to say it right here, you go look at, you go look at their demographics and you look at, you look at their, their socioeconomic status and you, and you look at the two things they have most in common. And then you go look at all the schools that TA is threatening to go into and shut down and take over and you tell me the two things they have in common. And then we're somewhere in the middle. I just, I just don't want, I don't want all of our people to get lost in, it, it's a blame game. I, I want to recognize that our, our people are doing a great job. And I think it will show up on, on, when, when the task comes to the end. But I, I just want to be careful that we don't send the impression that, that we have a blame game going on that, and that we're, we're failing. I don't think we're failing, I think we have a little bit of ground to make up. But some of that is the, you know, the ground they bring in. So I just, I want to be clear on that and that's a, I, I'm, I'm proud of our people. And I'm here, we're here to also expect excellence, but at the same time, you can, you can get too critical.
And I appreciate the ownership. What you said is what I would expect everybody else to say, right? Like everybody has said, hey, I wasn't here, hey, I wasn't here. That's what we need from everybody else is we weren't here or whatever, but we, we need everybody to, when that question is asked, is we're all together to make it right. I mean, to work towards and to start being proactive instead of us always being reactive. So your statement, sir, was very much appreciated of, we understand you, you landed in that seat with what you took on. And so thank you for the ownership and the responsibility. And I would expect everybody that reports up to you to have the same mentality. Cause I think that's the only way that we do make any type of forward movement with this, instead of just keep looking in the past. That's what I get frustrated with is always looking in the past, we can't change that.
Well, and I definitely agree, as a principal, as many years as I was, that was, we've had the superintendent who called you in, slammed their hands on a desk and then demanded to know what you're going to do about your scores. If I knew, I'd have fixed it. I'd, I'd, if I had the answer, I'd have put it in a long time ago. That's where the team effort, and I've, I've talked about collaboration since, that's where the, that's where the collaboration, so I, I agree, also agree. I definitely appreciate that ownership, but that, with that teamwork comes, you know, everybody's got to do their part. So we've got to properly look at curriculum and decide as a group on what curriculum is best. And then, so I, I apologize for the dodge tribe, I just. I know, sorry. First, and principals know me, the first thing I did was, they'll never shout at me, slam, bring them in and yell at them and slam my fist on the desk and say it's their fault. The first thing I did was look at, have I put them in a position to be successful? Have I given them the necessary resources to be successful? Have I built up their leadership capacity to be successful? And I sincerely was able to answer that no, which you have the flips coaching that we have right now, that's going on. Just getting the teacher, getting the principals coaching, because I can't hold you accountable if I have not given you the correct resources and the training. But you have my word, I take full responsibility. We will not be in this here situation when the scores come out. That will not happen under my watch. Just, just won't happen, I, I just want to allow that to happen.
Looking into Head Start. And, you know, would possibly help her greatly to bring kids in on a halfway level for a starting point. I'm not saying Head Start is the ultimate. Ultimate solution, but maybe it's one thing. And I appreciate you looking into that.
Yes, sir, we did have that meeting with Head Start last week. I was hoping to pull it off in January, but looks like we're not going to pull it off the next year if we want to do it correctly. And want to make sure, she gave us an example of where one superintendent overestimated the number of students would attend that Head Start program and it was not very successful. So we want to take our time and be methodical, because when I'm rolling something out, I'm putting the school district's reputation on the line. So I want that to be successful when we do roll it out next year.
Greg, did you get all your answers? All your questions answered? Okay, you're good. To get the discussion going? Yeah, okay. Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Did you have something, Kim? Five-five-one dot zero-seven-two, five-five-one dot zero-seven-four, five-five-one dot zero-seven-six, five-five-one dot zero-eight-two and five-five-one dot zero-eight-two-one.
We're gonna reconvene from executive session at eight thirty one P M. We'll go to item number twelve, I'm sorry, item number thirteen consent agenda. Did anybody have any questions on anything on the consent agenda?
No, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Amber. Second by Greg, all in favor. Motion carries. Good item number fourteen, consider approval of library book purchase. No, no, okay, that was done last month? Okay, we're gonna item fifteen, consider and take possible action to approve the selection of a. They're new, fourteen is new? She's not here.
Do you wanna pull it up, Rosie, put it up on the screen?
Okay. We're on fourteen, consider approval of library book purchase.
I mean, I'm gonna do the same thing, I'll make a motion to approve of the books, I mean, 'cause it was, I thought they were the books that we looked at last month. Yeah, I thought, I thought it was the same one, so that's why I said I'll make the motion.
Okay, so. Motion by Amber, second by Greg. All in favor. Motion carries. Item fifteen, consider and take possible action to approve the selection of a construction manager at risk for the Venus High School Phase One project pursuant to Texas Government Code Chapter two two six nine, subchapter F. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, the construction manager at risk.
Motion by Amber, do we have a second?
All second.
Second by Kirby, do we need to name it? Absolutely, we can.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I understand.
Any other questions?
Absolutely, ready to get engaged in pre-construction.
The fourth and eleventh, probably from December, sort of piggyback.
Thursdays? Okay.
What is your experience working with Huckabee?
I have a ton of experience working with Huckabee, working in the neighboring district to the north, doing three different projects with Huckabee there, and I've completed, I don't know, two dozen projects in North Texas with Huckabee, the last five years.
No, Madam President, you may have to reel me back in a little bit, I don't know what, what exactly appropriate question is, but, so, uh, timeline, is there any, uh, so y'all guarantee X number of days or X number of months for the completion, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any other questions? Sorry about that, Joe, I didn't mean to cut you off, that was kinda, I guess, what I thought before when they presented was for us to ask questions at that time, so I got a little confused, but anyway, um. The motion, and I think you need to name it. Name the company?
We already have. Okay, I, I would like to make a, a motion to approve Core as the C M R, C M A R for Venus High School Phase One.
Okay, so motion by Amber.
I second.
Second by Kirby, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, guys.
Good item sixteen, consider approval of the twenty six twenty seven multi-regent co-op agreement. Tina? Uh, can someone else?
Do we table this?
Yeah, we'll table it.
I'll make a motion to table it until later date.
Okay, motion by Kirby to table, second by Amber, all in favor. Motion carries. Good item seventeen, consider approval of purchase of staff Chromebooks. Warren is here.
No, sir. I'm ma- making a, a recommendation to, or asking you to approve the purchase of fifty seven, uh, staff Chromebooks, uh, at a cost not to exceed thirty six thousand five hundred dollars. With this purchase, um, this would allow forty percent of our staff members to have a, a device that is one year old or less. Most staff devices right now are five years old or more, um, and so the com- most common complaint we have is, is bad battery life, and so, th- these additional devices would let us get better, better, better tools and teachers' toolboxes to, to do their jobs. Um, all, what we, it was competitively bid, all bids were a part of purchasing co-ops, and, uh, the, the funds were budgeted, uh, out of this, out of this year's budget, just needing to spend them and get them in teachers' hands.
I don't know if you know off the top of your head, the percentage, what percentage of our faculty have a four or five-year-old computer? I, so my, I guess my ultimate, my question is, why?
I have that.
Why fifty seven? Or seventy, what is it, what's the number?
The, the reason fifty seven is, uh, I have thirty six thousand five hundred ninety four dollars. That, that's how much is left in that account to spend, and so I, I, I sent that number out to. That, that's how much is left in that account to spend, and so I, I, I sent that number out to our vendors and said maximize it.
I mean, the world computers, a five-year-old computer is, could be like worthless, uh, all the way up to still usable, so it's a, I said in the while we were limiting ourselves to forty percent of the features getting.
No, um, this
It's a budgetary restraint.
Yeah, the, the, this year, uh, Ms. Pa- Ms. Page allocated us sixty thousand dollars to spend on staff devices. We already spent twen- twenty thousand and change on staff devices to get ready for the school year, and so thi- this takes care of the rest of that. Um, and you, and you asked how many, how many staff members were using an, an older device?
I was just getting to Y fifty-seven, so you're why I answered my question, was that why you stopped at fifty-seven, so, that was an odd number to just
I do, I gotta, I gotta math it real quick. I'm, I'm a math guy, I gotta math it. Right now it's twenty-two percent, so, s- over seventy-five percent of our, of our staff members have a device that's five years older.
Yes, we have a motion by Randall.
My gosh, I didn't get one.
To approve, a second by Greg, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Go to item eighteen, consider approval of matters related to personnel resignations, employment, position, or contract amendments.
I'll make a motion to approve all matters related to personnel resignation, employment, and posi- uh, positions or contracted amendments.
Motion by Amber, do we have a second? Donald? A L D, how do you spell that, thanks? Motion by Amber, second by Donald, all in favor. Motion carries. Go to item number nineteen, reports, Mr. Gateway?
Uh, yes, ma'am, it's been a, uh, very busy month, uh, again, uh, just talking about what the principal's talked about, uh, tr- some of the highlights, uh, the trunk or treat with a huge success, I wanna send a big shout out to, uh, a lot of people don't realize it, but the muscle behind that was, uh, Mrs. Laura Price, she spent countless hours out there, uh, just getting people in line, uh, great job of her just, just spearheading that event. It's normally just a campus event, but she's kinda morphed it into a district-wide event, and you saw the fruit of that labor. Uh, Veterans Day celebrations were powerful around the district, uh, the middle school and the high school did a full ceremony, uh, great ceremonies, I attended both. I also attended the primary, uh, they had a parade of veterans that day, and I also went down and toured the elementary veterans photo wall tribute. Uh, we also hosted the monthly food bank at Bulldog Stadium, uh, lots of staff and students participated. They, we also hosted the all-in Angel Chili Cook-Off Casino Night, uh, this past weekend. Uh, also wanna talk about what's coming up, this year we are battling the, uh, city of Venus in a volleyball game to serve as a toy drive for the needy. Uh, Chief Groom has already, uh, claimed that he's gonna take the trophy home, but we're gonna try to recapture that trophy this year. Uh, yes, sir, with a fundraiser, Saturday night. Yes, sir, uh, some other staff recognition, I wanna recognize, uh, unsung hero, uh, Child Nutrition Director Tina McCormick. Uh, as you're aware, the government shutdown, uh, was in full effect, and one thing about Tina, she very frugal when it comes to money, she actually sacked away some money, we're able to continue to feed our kids, uh, our breakfast and lunch even during that shutdown, so, great job by her for saving for that rainy day, cause that rainy day did arrive here in Venus and across the nation. I also wanna send a, uh, special thanks to Coach Brian Williams, you probably don't know, but Coach Williams has started a seventh and eighth grade softball team. Uh, so he's got those young ladies participating in softball at the middle school, just little things that's going on that don't receive wide recognition, that people just don't know about, the behind the scenes. Also wanna talk about, uh, finance and operations, uh, one thing that D M, Mrs. D M Page keeps us, uh, in balance with, she makes sure that we stays financially sound. Uh, so she keeps us in line a little bit, sometimes she has to tell me no, cause I wanna spend all the money on different things, uh, with that, but she doesn't allow me to do so. Uh, H B three, we're now H B three compliant, I mean, we have armed security maintained at all campuses, we do have a new officer, I'll bring him to the next board meeting, so everybody can meet him. Uh, we do have some upcoming events, we have Thanksgiving break, we have, uh, semester exams, and, uh, the end of semester and winter break. Uh, one thing I just wanna end with, guys, uh, as we move into the holiday season, I want everybody to remain grounded on our true north, which is students, and I do believe in extreme ownership, as you could, as I said earlier, uh, as we, one thing you're starting to see, as we have grown in size in the district, uh, we do have to have solid systems in place, and it is a learning curve for some people getting used to those systems that are put in place to make sure that we're doing the right thing. We can no longer, uh, treat this district like we're a two-way school district, we're now was considered a mid-sized district, we're not a small district, a lot of people, I was having this discussion with Dr. Vega, she asked me what, what is this classified when she first came here, I said this is a mid-size, cause we're between fifteen hundred and five thousand students. Uh, with that, we have to have systems in place, and we're putting those systems in place, uh, to ensure that everything occurs, that we stay focused, no matter what we, uh, spend on money, uh, whether we invest in curriculum, what we're teaching, down to driving a bus to cutting the grass, we're focused on these students and keeping everybody guided towards that direction, and that's all I have, ma'am.
Dr. Vega, did you have anything?
Yes, okay, new girl, okay, uh, yeah, so, yeah, glad to kinda report on what I've done for the last two weeks, um, that, while I've been here. So, just an instructional focus update, campuses have all completed their, uh, C B A two, which some of the principals kinda talked about, some kind of areas of growth that I noted. Third grade math grew, um, over ten points in approaches, meets, and masters, sixth grade reading, reading language arts grew over ten points also in approaches, meets, and masters from C B A one to C B A two. Eighth grade math grew twenty points in approaches, nineteen in meets, which I was in an eighth grade classroom today, and definitely felt like that instruction was going really good. Uh, and then English one grew thirty-eight points in approaches, fifty points in meets, and twenty-four points in masters, so that's huge growth across kind of all three areas, um, for C, from C B A one to C B A two. I've conducted classroom walks at all the campuses, I was, of course, got to be at Venus High School a lot, um, over the year, but also have gotten to go out to the other three. Um, and our focus there has really been on doing walkthroughs, coming out, and then talking about action steps, like what can we give a teacher as an actionable step, whether they're struggling or they're doing a good job, so just trying to foster that culture of growth, um, for everyone and not just struggling teachers. Um, our assessment calendar, we're gonna have, uh, C B A three scheduled in February, currently our assessment calendar only has three C B As, so we're looking at adding more data points, just kinda talking about that focus on student achievement, if we're only doing data points three times a year, we're kinda missing in oper- some opportunities there to track how students are doing, so we'll be looking at that. Um, the flips, for as far as like school improvement, flips coaching has started, um, like they talked about earlier with Jimmy Heffernan from the, um, Region Service Center. And so he's already come and done like a meet and greet with the principals, and he'll be working just on capacity building with them, and it's kind of which direction they would like to go, so it's kind of customizable, um, for them. Versus the kinda coaching that Santiago receives through Texas Instructional Leadership is focused on data-driven instruction, so that is just a little bit different, um, but still really valuable coaching. I was Santiago's coach, not any longer, so now Rachel Bradley will be coaching me as the principal manager, and we'll coach Santiago together, um, so he'll continue that. We had several principals attend the Next Level Leadership Summit at the Service Center, so just furthering their learning. Um, Ms. Buck has STEM scopes coming out tomorrow, um, for the, uh, training for the middle school, so really excited for that, so I'll be popping in and out, um, over there for that as well. Um, and then just as far as my upcoming priorities, um, as I kind of come into this role, um, we'll be doing C B A two data analysis with the principals, um, and then having a plan for them to turn that into an actionable plan, how do we remediate for students that didn't meet the mark on C B A two and C B A one, um, while we still move on with strong tier-one instruction, um, so resulting in action plans. And then as far as systems and structures, what's on my radar is development of district-wide P L C structures and expectations, so, um, not just pockets of greatness, like Mr. Gateway said, but we want that greatness spread across all of our campuses and all of our grade levels. Um, development of district wa- district-wide walkthrough expectations, um, so not just focusing on T tests, that one kind of, um, walkthrough form that's linked to their evaluation, but how are we conducting informal walkthroughs so that we're collecting data and we can act on trends that we see, I mean, give action steps? And then development of district-wide internalization, data review protocol, and student growth tracking, so those are the things that are on my big list, on my whiteboard.
Thank you. Ms. Page, do you have anything?
I do, a question was asked about, um, the new, um, additional homestead exemption and what that was gonna do to us. Um, when we did the budget and when the Johnson County gave us property values this year, it was assumed that that was gonna pass, so it's not ineffective to us at all, because we already took it into account when we did the budget.
Uh, state hold harmless, what money that we don't collect, the state will throw in.
That's correct, and if you remember when we passed the bond, then we hurried up and sold the bonds, um, before August thirty-first, and that was to ensure that we got the hold harmless on the I N S side as well as the M and O side.
More importantly, when will the, when will we see that reduction on our personal tax bill?
Well, you should see it when you get your tax bill.
I got it, it wasn't on it.
That means your value went up. Mr. Buck, you, did it have both on it?
Okay, we'll go to item twenty, um, does the board request any, huh, does the board request any additional items? No, our next scheduled meeting is December fifteenth, our next scheduled regular meeting, and we will adjourn at eight fifty P M. I have a question for you. No, for him, I wanna, I don't, what is this?